Okay, this evening we have seven items up for new business this evening. Part, item B will be first reading and therefore there will be no action taken on that this evening. That will be going back to the Planning and Zoning Commission. And then we will be hearing that and Larry's comment. Okay? I will also request that all those messages be read by title only if that's approved at the council. Right? Okay. Thank you very much. Okay, assignment of this session. Let me go with, excuse me, let me get my notes here in order here too. Okay, here, pardon me. Okay, A. John, you take your own quarters?
Yep.
B, Don. Okay. C, Mayor.
Got it.
D, Chuck. Okay. E, John. F, Don. And G, Chuck. Okay. Are there any more questions to the agenda as presented this evening? If not, they stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. It is a free, public, sovereign, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, and ever so strong.
Thank you very much. Please call the board.
Greg?
Yes.
Mr. Perdor?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Tisch?
Yes, here. Okay. Pardon me, yes. Okay. Excuse me, what were you?
Do you have a modified agenda?
I need a modified. You didn't get one yet. Thank you, Pat.
Unless I pick these up, no, mine's mine name.
Yeah, you got it. Thank you, Pat, for doing that. Do you have all received the minutes for the February 19th council meeting? Are there any revisions or revisions to the minutes as presented?
I have none.
You have that, nobody else has any?
Nope.
If not, they stand approved and on record. Under Communications, Mr. Tisch.
I received an item that was in my mail and I'm going to presume that everybody else received it. It's dated 2/18/14. It's from a resident of West Main Street with regard to a tree on the property and I'm presuming everybody is aware of that.
Yes, sir. Okay, Mr. Dragish. How many communications? Nothing? Mr. Morave.
Just that the snow removal has been a good thing and keep up the good work, so. Bow.
Mayor, I'm sorry.
Nothing, Steve.
What's the question, Mayor?
I'm trying to move my chair closer to you.
John's hiding it, I can't quite see there. Nothing, you said, Mayor?
Nothing.
Okay, just without a, Mr. Ruino.
I have a number of correspondence. The first one, we received a notice of award from the Ohio Public Works Commission for the Fairview Stormwater Project and stating that funding will be available July 1st for that project. A notice from Columbia Gas with reference to a $1.5 million main line, service line, and gas meter replacement project that will be going on in the city this spring. And actually, they're holding a public meeting. Letters have been sent to residents in the area that are, will be in their project area tomorrow night at the St. Michael's Family Life Center at 6:00 PM. Also received a notice of upcoming Chamber Commerce Good Morning Campfield. That'll be held at the Moonee County Career and Technical Center on April 4th. And if you can get back to me whether you're available for that or not, if you make the reservation for that. It's at 7:30 in the morning. Received a notice from the upcoming event, the Tree City Awards Program. This is a statewide program and this year's host is the city of Cambridge, Ohio. That's on April 22nd. And typically, somebody from the Park and Recs attends that particular program. I haven't heard anything from them. And lastly, a letter from the American Legion Post 177 thanking the city for past support and requesting the city's consideration and support for the 2014 Memorial Day Services on the Village Green. That's all I have under Communications.
There you go. Mr. Portis.
I don't have any communications.
Mr. Tisch.
No communications.
Okay, and reports for committees and the board. Mr. Tisch.
I have no committee report.
Okay, Mr. Dragish.
I have nothing.
Mr. Morave.
The Cardinal Fire District continues to look for and identify the need for a third fire station. And, you know, there's been land that has been donated or the district will be able to lease off of the township down by the Herbert Road Park. So, we have advertised for an architect to help us with the stages that we need to go through at this point to, like a punch list in order to get this project rolling. This is all is part of the ISO standards and ratings will help us keep our fire district at a low rating so as to keep the insurance costs down. This, it's been identified that there is a need there and so the fire district is moving forward with these plans. This may not happen until 2015, but as you know, the planning has to start now. So, more communications about that later, but we're in a preliminary stages of getting this started.
Thank you, Mr. Morave.
Question?
Yes, sir.
Has the fire district decided on that location or are they still evaluating locations?
No, it's been, that location has been identified as the best suitable location for the third fire station.
Okay, so the planning that's going on is planning with regard to the structure and that kind of thing?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
And Mayor, you're next.
I have the numbers for the month of February for the mayor's court. The gross was $12,227. Of that, the city will net $10,109. I think that's remarkable. Also, for February, we made 350 traffic stops, gave out 38 citations, which is slightly less than 11%. And that's the number that I have wanted to make public. It's like one out of nine people get a ticket that gets stopped. So much for the speed trap in Campfield. That's all I have to report.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Ruino? Yeah? Reports.
Okay, starting out, we have seven items on tonight's agenda to deal with. The first one being an ordinance authorizing a contract modification for MS Consultants, their 2013-14 Basic Services Agreement. And basically, this is just an increase in dollars. If you recall the way the contract was set up, we had an estimated amount of hours in there for different tasks as well as language that would allow MS to do reviews of subdivisions and various development projects throughout the city. And I think, I guess it's good news the fact that we've had quite a few development projects crop up in 2013 and the beginning of this year. And we've exceeded the, we had the contract set up for $37,500 and we've exceeded that amount with a lot of the add-ons, the development reviews. For instance, the library, the advanced audit that's coming in, Dollar General, that was quite a large project, and currently Fairway Ford, we're reviewing that one. So basically, asking for an additional $6,000.
$6,535.
Yeah, $6,535. And that would bring us up to closure on the 2013-14 contract with MS. And there's, yeah, there's absolutely no changes to the language or the terms of the contract, it's just the dollars, adding additional dollars since we've billed everything or paid everything through that one account rather than have separate accounts for every project.
Joe, does that complete then those projects? That's $6,535 is that?
Yes, that would carry us through to the end of this, end of February, basically. Now, there may be some further reviews on Fairway that's just started during that process. And that would come out of the next contract if that's approved this evening. The next item would be the contract for the year 2014 and '15. This would be a 12-month contract that will come to from March till the end of February 2015. And basically, set up in the same manner where we've estimated the amount of council meetings, planning commission meetings, and different activities that take place during the course of the year. Next item, the ordinance adopting the requirements of Ohio Revised Code Section 134705. This came from an audit review from 2011. We received the comments back that there was everything financially okay, there was one policy missing by the city that deals with the handling of personal information. And what I've asked the city attorney to do was to develop a policy for the city that would coincide with the state Ohio Revised Code language. Now, if you want to touch on that a little bit more.
Yeah, the way I drafted the ordinance, as you'll note, is that we could have done it a couple of different ways. Council could have done each and every one of those delineated items in that ordinance or council could have authorized and directed the city manager to implement those items. And the way I drafted it was for council to take its action tonight, directing and authorizing the city manager to then do those items in terms of the development of that personal information system. So it's pretty straightforward, but you're directing the city manager to get it done, basically.
Basically, by passage of the ordinance, then we have to sign a certified document sent back to the auditors that we are going to adhere to that policy. Next item up is an ordinance amending 1973-44, the rezoning lots on Fairground Boulevard. This is the Grange Building, just in front of our water tank up there. They're basically asking to go from an S district to a B3 so it would be more commercially used versus, an S is primarily a school, church, public building. And that would just require a first reading this evening. It gets sent back to planning, they'll hold a public hearing and then send it back with their recommendation to council at a later date. Next item is a resolution authorizing the city manager to sign and execute a contract with the Ohio Department of Transportation. This is the final legislation for our signalization project. As you recall, that project is a 100% funded project, so there's no local share of participation from the city. Funding is coming from the federal, state, and East Gate Council Governments for that project. Item F is a resolution authorizing advances on the collection of real estate taxes. Again, this is something that's passed annually in the springtime. It's just a notice that we're required to give the auditor that we would like our share of the real estate taxes. And lastly, is a motion for reimbursement of utility charges. And this is a very unique situation that occurred in the city. Actually goes back 20-some years. A gentleman purchased the home back in 20-some years ago. Prior to his buying the home, a meter was installed and it's been recorded in the city as an ad meter, which means the second meter which services the outside of the property, basically, for a pool and irrigation system, was set ahead of the main meter for the house. So anything that flowed through that meter would be charged in addition to what the house would use. In reality, the actual meter is after the main meter, so the gentleman's been paying basically twice for water and prorated on the sewer and the debt service for the course of 23 years. Our building department went through the records that we had available to us, which took us back about 11 years. And we came up with the average cost per year and then multiplied that by the 23 years to get to the settlement figure. I've had this discussion with the property owner, he's in agreement with what we came up with and acceptable to council. We would also have him sign a release before we cut a check for that. But it's money that's, the city's actually collected, which we shouldn't have collected.
Was he okay with these terms, Joe?
I'm sorry?
Was the resident okay with these terms?
Yes, and as I say, I sat down with him, he was in total agreement with what we came up with in the process of which we used to get there. Because over the, again, over the course of 23 years, there's been a number of rate increases. He actually had, kept track of all of his meter readings. He had the actual consumption numbers, but didn't have the various changes in the rate structure through the course of the year. So, we came to an agreement with that dollar amount and I feel it's fair and equitable. Thank you, Mayor. That aside, we've also, with the help of MS Consultants, put together two grant applications in the past couple of weeks. One of them for the ODOT Transportation Alternative Program. And this would participate in the replacement of the sidewalks along East Main Street from the Village Green to Hillside Drive. And an ODOT Safe Routes to School Program, which the school is a great help as well in participating. They have to be an active participant in this program. It's a 100% fundable project that would allow the city to build sidewalks in areas of the city that are contiguous or traffic generators of students to the various middle schools. Eric, that's middle school, but elementary schools, K through, K through. And the school, again, provided the information needed. It's quite a bit of information. We had gotten support letters from the Board of Health, the East Gate Council Governments, superintendent from the school, they provided the Excel files of all of their students' locations and that project was submitted. And we're hopeful we can get funded on both of those this year. Monday, we opened bids for the agricultural lease at Redgate. We had five bidders and the bids ranged from $127 per acre to $175.50 per acre. Obviously, we go with the high bid on that. And it would generate about $35,500 per year for the agricultural use of the farm. Yeah, last week, I think I reported to you already, we had a situation on Friday where we had, by the news, we had broken two records. We had back-to-back low temperatures on both evenings and woke up to three water breaks within the city at the same time. At that particular time at, you know, 7:30, 8 o'clock in the morning, we're starting to lose the levels in our tank. So we put out a voluntary conservation measure and the media was very supportive in getting that out. By about noon, we had two of them pretty well taken care of and the third one on Lisbon Street's still flowing. Once we got that located and cut under control, we started picking up levels in the tank again around 3:00 PM in the afternoon. So, we certainly appreciate the community helping out and not wasting or using a lot of water during that period. My biggest fear was that with the three flowing and they were all in different areas of the city, it wasn't one area that we could isolate and know for certain that there weren't other ones out there. We had one on Herbert Road, one down the street here on Lisbon, and one on Fairview Avenue. Again, once we had those buttoned up, there appeared to be no other breaks and there hasn't been since that time. So we survived the weekend and better part of the week here. So hopefully, that was the worst we'll see. We've still got some winter ahead of us, but that's been the worst we've had up to this point and we've been very fortunate. At the same time, the news media was reporting our story, they had talked to Youngstown and I guess over the course of this winter, they've been 200-plus water breaks, which obviously is a bigger system than ours, but I don't know how we'd handle that. God bless them. And lastly, I've prepared a preliminary budget, which is basically the footprint that we used last year. I don't have any capital in that, but I've provided each of you a copy of it for you to take a look at and start to digest. I'd like to have a meeting on the 17th at 7:00 PM to go over the capital projects, which you might like to add to the budget. And hopefully, we can have that wrapped up for the next meeting on the 19th for passage. That's all I have.
Any questions, Joe, then? Yes, he's over here, report. Be after mayor's. Mark, do you have any report?
After mayor's court. We have court at 6:00.
Right, 5:30.
5:30, yeah, we'll be fine.
And we should be done by 7:00. Mark, do you have any report?
Yeah, briefly. We're going to go ahead and draft and execute the deeds for the transfer of the real estate next to us here to the library. That won't take any council action. Last year, council approved the whole kind of scope of transactions pursuant to an agreement between the city and the library. But just so you're aware, we will be preparing those and those deeds will get recorded very shortly. We already talked about the ordinance required by the state auditor. Dave turned me on to a fellow at MS regarding demolition of structures, ordinance that I told you about last meeting that we're tweaking. A guy by the name of Brian Fisher down there was very helpful to me in terms of providing me with some citations and some resources that I'm going to look at now in terms of cleaning that ordinance up. It's turning into a much bigger job than we anticipated, but it's well worth it. You know, I think at the end of the day, we're going to have a very good demolition permit ordinance with all the bells and whistles, the federal requirements, state requirements, local requirements, et cetera. So, taking a little longer than I'd like, but there's a lot to look at when you're talking about asbestos and hazardous material, inspection, abatement, removal, disposal, every one of those steps. Did I mention at the last council meeting, I know I've mentioned, Joe, the city manager's meeting or a staff meeting, the Todd case, the city was involved in relative public records. They have failed to file an appeal with the Southern District Court of Appeals now. So their only avenue for an appeal would be a direct appeal to the Supreme Court. And they have until the middle of March to file that. So we'll have to wait and see if they do do that. But they've run out of, they've run past their appeal time at the Southern District. Chief Caluccia emailed me yesterday, gave me a green light to proceed with the dangerous drug ordinance that we've talked about. There were some issues to whether we wanted to develop that or not at this time. And we are, I will be putting a draft of an ordinance together for the chief to look at, Joe, and then you'll probably see that in your next packet or two. That's the gap drug ordinance, between the illicit, illegal street drugs and narcotics. There are drugs that are dangerous, that aren't highly regulated, the Revised Code prohibits them, but we want to be able to cite under our city ordinance. So, look for that ordinance in the near future. And then I'll take any questions, yeah.
Thanks, Mark. I guess there's no questions, sir. Mr. Tisch.
Thank you. Joe stole most of my thunder on the Transportation Alternative Program funding and the Safe Routes to Schools program applications, both of those that were submitted this past week, week and a half or so. Hopefully, ODOT will look on us favorably and then the city will be successful in getting the funds there. The other outstanding project that's ongoing in the city though is the North Broad Street Phase II Safety Upgrade Project. And that remains to be completed upon the return of warmer weather this spring. That's with the assumption of warm weather does come back. The sidewalks though, drive approaches, a surface course of asphalt and restoration work will be completed at that time, mainly waiting for the asphalt plants to get running again and some of those things. Plus, all of the other punch list items would have to be taken care of as in any normal project. It's probably approximately about 60 to 65% complete at this time. It really shouldn't take that much time to wrap up once warm weather returns. And finally, just to let you know that we will be continuing to work with the city administration to develop viable projects that are going to be open to best interest of the city and also geared and be structured to be competitive because we're going up against other cities that have other needs and applications. We want to make sure we get the biggest bang for the buck for the city. We're going to be working with the administration, we're going to be including council in that endeavor to make sure that we can identify projects that will be structured to be competitive, where we can, you know, it'll, I guess, bring a lot of good to the most or the largest amount of population within the city so we can go get some regional points for that. That'll be important. So that'll be forthcoming in the near future here. That's all I have unless you have any questions.
Yeah, Dave?
The Phase II project?
Yes.
That asphalt is tore up, I mean, there are potholes and, I mean, and I don't know whether it's a result of us, you know, taking that layer off and then winter hitting, but what plans we have going forward to ensure that when we put down the final coat of asphalt that it's, you know, it's going to stay there? I mean, I know there's a warranty or whatever on the ore.
Yes, and well, some of that is that, actually, this is going to sound a little strange, but I just drove up there and Mr. Diori was looking, we're both looking at it. It is actually in not-too-bad of shape. It looks, you know, there are some areas that it looks bad, but for the winter that it went through. It does have an intermediate course on it, which isn't the surface course, which is a finer course and you do a lot more to sit without the rain and the water and weather abandoned. It has a little bit, I guess, larger diameter aggregate in it, but it's held up fairly well. Now, prior to us putting the surface course on, we will look at those issues. There may be a little bit of rutting in some of the wheel areas that we see. Some of those were already addressed. I understand that there is an area just north of, where the project ends. Beyond the project, okay, that really broke up. So, you know, that area there has held up remarkably well for the weather that we've seen this winter. But, yeah, no, certainly not going to allow anybody to pave over something that looks like it's going to fail immediately.
Okay, Dave, thank you. Any questions for Dave tonight? Okay, item number seven, under recognition of persons in design and speak before council, may I ask you to step up to the podium? Say your name and address and clearly for the record. Keep your comments brief. We have Frank McKea.
My name is Frank McKea. I reside at 220 Redding. Good evening to all. A month or two ago, I addressed the Planning and Zoning Committee Board. And I would like those comments to be read into tonight's meeting and have them on the record and request that the copy of tonight's minutes be sent to the chairperson of that board for their information. I quote, "Now that the election is over and done with, I would like to say a few words to this board. They are not directed at any individual nor meant to incriminate any individual. Prior to the election, a former member of this board wrote a full-page ad in the town crier in regard to term limits issues, which I did sponsor. In the interest of full disclosure, I also wrote an article favoring passage. Again, I'm not insinuating that this article had the backing of this board, I just do not know. I sincerely hope not. But just for the record, let me respond to you, this board, in regard to some of the comments in the article. The writer did not mention that the charter commission was addressing the timing of the elections for the Ohio Revised Code. According to the city attorney, this can be resolved. The writer did not mention that many people on the boards and commissions have been there for 10 and 20 years. Nor did he mention that there was little effort to find new people as terms expired. At the end of last year, 17 people were identified for a list of six to seven openings. New people bring fresh ideas and enthusiasm to boards. The writer insinuated that there would be potential chaos if persons were allowed to address the board before a final vote was taken on the issue. The writer did not mention that each writer would be granted only three minutes and it must be on the issuing question. The writer asks, who's behind the... The writer asks, "Who's behind the changes to our city charter? You will find that one person who lost his bid to be a councilman is orchestrating this campaign to change the city charter. That person is me. Now, I ask you, does not any person have the right to pursue changes? Why the criticism? What does an election in 2011 have to do with a charter amendment in 2013? If I wanted to run again, that option is open. I chose not to." The writer failed to mention in the article that he currently sat on a board. The writer failed to mention in the article that he would be termed out if the amendment passed. Words for disclosure, I would be ashamed to put my name on any such biased article. I cannot believe this reflected the feelings of this board. Thank you for your consideration. I wish the board the best of success in 2014. End of quote. In addition, I would like to thank that board for the courtesy shown to me during that meeting.
Right, who is, this was an article somewhere?
In the town crier. It was a full-page article in the town crier. But, you know, we have all kinds of people in the world, everybody's entitled to their opinion, so I just wanted to get that on the record.
How long ago was that in there, Frank?
Hmm, right before the election.
So, last year?
Yeah, right before the election, yeah. On to my next one. I'm sorry it took me a little long, Steve, but this is as brief as I can be. During the second meeting in January, I challenged each member of the council to take on a certain project or to look at it, and it was only my personal challenge. Mr. Tisch was absent. Tonight is your turn.
I can hear you.
Mr. Tisch has been in the city administration and can be a positive addition to council. In the 2012 election, however, Mr. Tisch wrote an article opposing the charter amendments and insinuated they were being promoted so that they would create open positions on council. I presume that was meant for me. Both issues passed. I find it a bit ironic that the charter amendments he opposed could be the reason he's sitting on council. And I'm here, unelected, unappointed, but let me offer you a few challenges, or a challenge anyway. The challenge is the Redgate Farm. I believe it was you, a city manager, who raised his hand at the auction on May 17, 2003, and bid some $2.3 million for the property. I believe council approved this purchase on an emergency meeting, May 21, 2003, four days later. In other words, the city was obligated to an amount of approximately 20% of our annual budget without prior council approval. Council does have the right to expend money, but we're gonna spend $2.3 million. I think that ought to be run in front of the citizens. My opinion. So, here we sit, 2014, with a piece of property still unpaid for, for which we have no use and no foreseeable way to recruit our investment. It's costing us about $100,000 a year out of the city coffins. There is no big demand for housing in our area. We have plenty of housing available. In my opinion, our priority should be to keep and enhance what we have. Expansion is not a priority. Now, previous administrations have kicked the Redgate can down the road. Last night, I searched through the dumpster behind the city hall and found the can that's been kicked down the road. Let me present it to you. Now, my challenge to you is it's time to put an end to this anchor around our neck. No more kicking the can down the road. You've got a right person to lead the job. I'm sure you can do it, and I wish you all the best of luck. Just a couple of small quickie items. Has anyone given any thought to somehow notifying the citizenry of the fact that the website now contains agendas and that type of thing? You know, I suggested they put it in with a water bill. Has anyone given a thought to it, or is that just out of the question?
I thought the JT was gonna put it in the, uh...
That's one option, but that doesn't cover everybody. I mean, that, how many people get it? 20% maybe? I'm just guessing.
They read your article.
I'm dead, yeah. Not enough. I wish more, but anyway. I think, just my opinion, we gotta somehow let the citizens know that this is available on the website.
I agree. I agree.
And lastly, I would again request that all of tonight's business be go through a second reading. It's the, you know, thank you all for your time.
I'd just like to go in with a good job. First of all, on the Redgate situation, you know, when I came on council, I didn't know whether I was for or against Redgate and what we were doing with this property, but hearing both sides, the administration at the time did go ahead and purchase that property for future expansion. Now, things have changed. We might not be as easy as we thought it was gonna be to perhaps expand in the future that way. However, we do own Redgate. The truth is that in order to bring more revenue into the city, the city has to grow, and so that was the logic and the thinking behind the Redgate Farm. We do own an asset, and we owe about $700,000 on that asset today that was paid down from 2.3. So, they're not making land anymore, and so that asset could become very valuable at a later time. And that was my contention about a month ago, or two months ago, when the discussion is why get rid of it now when it's devalued? When you have a devalued asset, you hang on to it until it appreciates. So, there's more to it than just, we got this Redgate farm and it's out there. Yeah, it's there. We have it. It's an asset, and one day, it may be proved very valuable to the city. So, why be in a very hasty rush to get rid of it at this point? I don't think we need to do that. It's not burdening us to the point we can't afford it. So, that was my contention on that. And it's not just clear-cut, we have an ice wall out there and we need to get rid of it. That isn't the case. I do agree with you. We do need to get the message out that now the agendas and everything, the minutes for the meetings, everything is on the website. Anybody that wants to know what is gonna happen at the council meeting can go online. It's all online. Read the ordinances, read the resolutions, and if there's any questions, we've all opened up our phones to those questions. I don't believe we need to have two readings on the ordinances, resolutions. Just my opinion, but that's Mr. Rogers' decision.
Thank you. Thank you. Echo that. Like that.
Mr. Tisch, if I may, as the reference is to Redgate and my participation, I guess I would, for the record, make sure that everybody is aware that the purchase of land is an authorization the city council can make. It is also an authorization that can be made in an executive session, because the purchase of land can be an executive session type of decision. There is an executive session held in advance of the date that I bid on the property for Redgate, in which council authorized me to bid up to a limit, and I can't tell you what that number was off the top of my head. And that was the authorization that I was working on, on that Saturday that I entered that bid. It was then after that date that I came back to council and gave them the actual dollar amount at which we had bid for the property, and that's why the authorization was made after the fact.
Very good. That's it. Any else? Okay, we're gonna move on to item eight, which is, okay, old business, there is none under new business now. As provisioned in section 4.05 of the Charter of the City of Canfield, I move the council to dispense with the requirement of two readings of the proposed ordinance and authorize by adoption by the same first reading. Do I have a second on that?
Second.
Second, Mr. Morave, discussion. There being none, clerk is called a roll.
Mr. Dragich?
Yes.
Mr. Cozart?
Yes.
Mr. Morave?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Tisch?
Yes.
And as provisioned in section 4.05 of the Charter of the City of Canfield, I move to be dispensed with the requirement of two readings as for the proposed ordinance and authorize adoption by the same first reading. Do I have a second on that?
Second.
Second, Mr. Raggish, discussion. There being none, clerk is called a roll.
Mr. Dragich?
Yes.
Mr. Cozart?
Yes.
Mr. Morave?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes. Did I read the second one twice? First one twice? There, right? Okay, I'm sorry. Um, Ms.?
Mr. Tisch?
Yes.
Okay, one of these, I'm sorry. Were we reading the second part of that now? Help me out now. As provisioned in section 4.05 of the Charter of the City of Canfield, I move to be counsel dispense with the requirement of full reading of the proposed ordinance and just author title only. Do I have a second on that?
Second.
Discussion. I said that twice, and I feel like there being none. Clerk is called a roll again on that? This dude again, please.
Mr. Dragich?
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Cozart?
Yes.
Mr. Morave?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Tisch?
Yes.
Okay. That, Mr. Morave, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I have an ordinance authorizing a contract modification number one for MS Consultants, Inc., for the 2013-2014 Basic Engineering Services Agreement, and I move for passage.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. B, I'm sorry, the mayor. Do I have a second? Uh, do I, discussion?
This, just for clarification, this was our contract with MS Consultants. There was some additional work with the library, advanced auto parts, the Fairway Ford, which led to the additional hours, and that's all that, it is an amount of $6,535, and this is what we need to get into that contract.
Okay, clerk is called a roll.
Mr. Dragich?
Yes.
Mr. Cozart?
Yes.
Mr. Morave?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Tisch?
Yes.
And the ordinance number is?
2014-10.
2014-10. Okay, okay. Next one is V. As provisioned in section 4.05 of the Charter of the City of Canfield, I move the council to dispense with the requirement of two readings of the proposed ordinance and authorize adoption by the same first reading. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Morave, discussion. Clerk is called a roll.
Mr. Dragich?
Yes.
Mr. Cozart?
Yes.
Mr. Morave?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Tisch?
Yes.
Okay, and as provisioned in section 4.05 of the Charter of the City of Canfield, I move the council to dispense with the requirement of a full reading of the proposed ordinance and authorize reading by title only. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Tisch, discussion. Clerk is called a roll on that.
Mr. Dragich?
Yes.
Mr. Cozart?
Yes.
Mr. Morave?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Tisch?
Yes.
Okay, next one is done. An ordinance authorizing the city manager to sign a contract for general engineering services with MS Consultants, Inc., for the year 2014 and part of 2015. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Tisch, the discussion. Clerk is called a roll.
Mr. Dragich?
Yes.
Mr. Cozart?
Yes.
Mr. Morave?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Tisch?
Yes.
And number is?
2014-10.
Okay. Next one is item C. As provisioned in section 4.05 of the Charter of the City of Canfield, I move to dispense with the requirement of two readings of proposed ordinance and authorize adoption by Santa Claus first reading. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Morave, discussion. There being none, clerk is called a roll.
Mr. Dragich?
Yes.
Mr. Cozart?
Yes.
Mr. Morave?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Tisch?
Yes.
Okay. And as provisioned in section 4.05 of the Charter of the City of Canfield, I move the council to dispense with the requirement of full reading of the proposed ordinance and authorize by title only. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, the mayor, discussion. There being none, clerk is called a roll.
Mr. Dragich?
Yes.
Mr. Cozart?
Yes.
Mr. Morave?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Thank, yes.
Mr. Tisch?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Mayor, I guess you're next, actually. Yep.
The ordinance, Mr. Chairman, I move that we pass an ordinance adopting the requirement of the Ohio Revised Code, Section 1314.05. I move for approval.
Very good. Do I have a second?
I'd like to correct that. That was 1347.5, right?
What did I say?
1347.05.
05.
That's correct.
1347.5.
What did I say? It was correct. 05 was correct.
No, he said 1314.05.
That's what I thought.
Okay, I missed that too. I'm sorry.
I stand corrected.
Thank you. Thank you, John, for your help on that, and, yeah.
Do we have a second?
Do I have a second? Do that, yeah.
Oh, second.
Mr. Morave, a second, and do I have a discussion on that?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
For the manager, have you given any thought to how you're going to proceed on this in that we're talking about appointing an individual to be directly responsible? Is this going to be an existing employee? Are you looking at hiring another employee?
No, basically, the direction I was going to have, we have a public records committee that's comprised of myself, the finance director, the mayor's court clerk, and the fire chief, and you can designate one of that party to be the records person for this.
Okay, that is my only question, whether we're looking at somebody additional or whether we're using existing staff to do this. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you very much. Clerk is called a roll.
Mr. Dragich?
Yes.
Mr. Cozart?
Yes.
Mr. Morave?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Tisch?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Item D is in our ordinance.
Yeah, ordinance number.
I'm sorry, ordinance number, I'm sorry, Pat. Or something.
2014-10.
Thank you, Pat. Appreciate that. Item D is an ordinance again, too. Okay, as provisioned in section 4.05 of the Charter of the City of Canfield, I move to dispense with the requirement to require two readings of the proposed ordinance and authorize adoption by Santa Claus first reading. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Dragich, discussion. There being none, clerk is called a roll.
Mr. Dragich?
Yes.
Mr. Cozart?
Yes.
Mr. Morave? Mr. Morave.
Yes.
Mr. Rogers.
Yes.
Mr. Tisch.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
If this is going to be referred to the planning commission, isn't this only first reading anyway?
It's all it is. I mean, we said that before the meeting. I mentioned it was first reading, remember? It's first reading.
Okay, but you're passing the motion to do it by a...
Title.
Title only.
It's fine.
Okay.
The first reading.
I vote yes.
Yeah, that's, that should have been just for one, you're right. Your first question. Title only. Title only is fine. Now, that constitutes first reading. The first reading is what, is a reading after? That's a planning disc here, first, correct.
Okay, so we got the first reading, I need to read the ordinance.
Right.
Mr. President, I have an ordinance amending ordinance 1973-44, rezoning lot 1498 on Fairground Boulevard from S Special District to B3 Highway Commercial District. This constitutes first reading.
Very good, Chuck. Thank you very much. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by the mayor. Any discussion on that? We're not going to record for you, because that's my, it's over to go. Okay. Item E is a resolution again, too. As provisioned, as per the provision in section 4.05 of the Charter of the City of Canfield, I move the council to dispense with the requirements of two readings of proposed resolution and authorize adoption by Santa Claus first reading. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Morave. Discussion. Clerk is called a roll.
Mr. Dragich.
Yes.
Mr. Cozer.
Yes.
Mr. Morave.
Yes.
Mr. Rogers.
Yes.
Mr. Tisch.
Yes.
Okay. And as provisioned in section 4.05 of the Charter of the City of Canfield, I move the council to dispense with the requirement of a full reading of proposed ordinance and authorize reading by title only. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Tisch. Any discussion? Clerk is called a roll.
Mr. Dragich.
Yes.
Mr. Cozer.
Yes.
Mr. Morave.
Yes.
Mr. Rogers.
Yes.
Mr. Tisch.
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Morave.
Mr. Chairman, I have a resolution authorizing the city manager of the City of Canfield to sign and execute a contract with the Ohio Department of Transportation, PID number 90373, and I move for passage.
Do you miss more of it, any, second?
Second.
Second, but the mayor. Discussion.
This is 100% funded by ODOT. Yeah, there's three sources of funding, the federal highway department, the state highway department, and the Eastgate council governments are all participating.
Thank you, Joe. Good job, thank you. Okay, the clerk is called a roll.
Mr. Dragich.
Yes.
Mr. Cozer.
Yes.
Mr. Morave.
Yes.
Mr. Rogers.
Yes.
Mr. Tisch.
Yes.
Very good. Item F. Resolution. I'm sorry, the number again, apologize. Number, please. 2014 dash six. I'm really glad you're back. Thank you so much. Okay. Item F, resolution. As provisioned in section 4.05 of the Charter of the City of Canfield, I move the council to dispense with the requirement of two readings of proposed ordinance and authorize adoption by Santa Claus first reading. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Tisch. Any discussion? Okay. Clerk is called a roll.
Mr. Dragich.
Yes.
Mr. Cozer.
Yes.
Mr. Morave.
Yes.
Mr. Rogers.
Yes.
Mr. Tisch.
Yes.
Okay, and as provisioned in section 4.05 of the Charter of the City of Canfield, I move that, pardon me, I move the council to dispense with the requirement of a full reading of proposed resolution and move by, we do like title only. Do I have a second?
Sorry.
Second, Mr. Morave. Discussion. Clerk is called a roll on that one.
Mr. Dragich.
Yes.
Mr. Cozer.
Yes.
Mr. Morave.
Yes.
Mr. Rogers.
Yes.
Mr. Tisch.
Yes.
Okay, and that is, okay, Mr. Are you done? Next.
A resolution requesting advances on the collection of real estate taxes.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion?
Just a comment.
Sure.
This is, I think, as the manager mentioned, sort of standard practice. What this is, a cash flow issue in that real estate tax collections are now open. I think deadlines may be Friday or something like that, and they can sort of take their time on distribution of funds. This allows us to make that request upfront and gets us money a little, well, a lot quicker than we would normally.
Very good, very good, Chuck. Thank you very much for that. Clerk is called a roll.
Mr. Dragich.
Yes.
Mr. Cozer.
Yes.
Mr. Morave.
Yes.
Mr. Rogers.
Yes.
Mr. Tisch.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, and G is, as provisioned in section 4.05 of the Charter of the City of Canfield... My number, I have a problem with numbers tonight, you know, what is with numbers tonight?